There are two different ones, right? Two different stacks. Do they need one too?
Yes.
Hi Kevin, how's it going?
It wasn't four.
Right.
It was two.
Yeah, right, right.
I have one left.
Okay. But it's all there. Yeah, sorry, we're ready. Thank you, yeah.
Sorry for the delay, we're trying to get extra copies of things for folks. As soon as we get the extra handouts for everyone handed out, then I'll go ahead and start, but I did want folks to have an opportunity to have the handouts since we're having difficulties this evening. Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this meeting of, the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the Successor Agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency for this Tuesday, August 8th, 2023. We are having some equipment technical difficulties, and so because of that, there will be no Zoom attendees and the screens in here are not working, which is why we're giving handouts to folks, and I will let the city attorney address what our rules and regulations are about this.
Yeah, absolutely, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The, of course, the Brown, under the Brown Act, what the Brown Act expects is that you have an open and public meeting where people can be present in person. We provide the virtual meeting and opportunity to comment virtually as a courtesy. It's unfortunate that we're not able to make that available tonight, but it does not prevent you from moving forward to either meeting pursuant to state law.
Okay, thank you for that. Yes, Laura?
I just wanted to make a comment that I, I feel that it's really important that if people are expecting to be able to make comment via Zoom, and there's not enough notice to let them know that that's not going to be the case so they can get here, that we ought to postpone decisions that folks might want to comment on. So I had requested that we postpone, but it's not my decision, so we're going to continue.
Okay, thank you for that, and I appreciate all the public that is here this evening that want to make public comment directly to us. So with that, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lemus?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sparks?
Here.
Mayor Harvey?
Here.
We'll show Councilmember Rivers as absent.
Thank you for that. And would everyone please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by nation under all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. We will now move on to approval of the minutes and notice of waiving of reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda. This is an action item for the Kattati City Council Regular Meeting of July 25th, 2023. Are there any questions or comments from the council on that? Okay, since this is an action item, I will open this up for public comment, anyone wanting to make a comment on the minutes from our July 25th meeting. Raise your hand. I'm not seeing anyone jump up or raise their hand. Okay, then I will bring that back to the council, and I'd be looking for a motion.
Move to approve those minutes?
All second. I have a motion in the second. All in favor? Aye.
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 So let that show, we have four and one absent. We will move on then to the announcements. First, meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers in conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the city council will consider the items and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relative to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members believed are incorrect, misinformed, or purposely biased. Next, Measure S supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at kattatcity.org. Next, like always, we love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600 or info@kattatcity.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at 707-792-4611, and of course, if you have an emergency, please contact 911. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, and Nixol. The next item that we have is proclamation. A proclamation of the city council of the city of Kattati commemorating the 50th anniversary of KBBF. And I will have Sylvia read that proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll read the proclamation of the city council of the city of Kattati commemorating the 50th anniversary of KBBF. Whereas KBBF has been a trailblazer in the broadcasting industry, being recognized as the first bilingual public radio station in the United States, and whereas KBBF has provided an invaluable platform for promoting linguistic diversity, cultural understanding, and community engagement over the past 50 years, and whereas KBBF has enriched the airwaves with high-quality programming that educates, entertains, and informs listeners in English, Spanish, and indigenous American languages. And whereas the rise of catastrophic wildfires, flooding, and other crises in Northern California have put KBBF in a position as a media first responder for underserved populations and non-English-speaking communities, including our indigenous communities who speak Triki, Mixteco, or Chatino, by providing invaluable life-saving emergency information. And whereas KBBF has had a long history as a community educator and organizer in Sonoma County, building bridges that connect new and established populations and enhancing the capacity of newcomers to participate fully in the community civic affairs. And whereas the dedication, passion, and vision of KBBF have made a lasting impact on the media landscape and the lives of countless individuals. Now therefore, be it proclaimed on this 8th day of August 2023, that the Kattati City Council hereby honors and commands KBBF on the occasion of its 50th anniversary as the first bilingual public radio in the United States. And be it further proclaimed that the Kattati City Council expresses its sincere appreciation for the invaluable contributions of KBBF in promoting multilingualism, cultural diversity, and community engagement. And be it further proclaimed that the city, the Kattati City Council recognizes the role of KBBF in fostering cross-cultural understanding and providing a voice for diverse communities. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Do we have anyone here to accept the proclamation?
We do, we do. Alicia Sanchez, who's the director at KBBF, if she can come forward, please.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you for the minute.
Did you want to say anything?
Well, I want to thank you very much, all of you. Thank you so much for honoring KBBF this way. Yes, it's 50 years, and I feel it's a very important milestone in the life of KBBF, and thank you so much for being part of that. Thank you.
And thank you, thank you for all the work that you do. And would you like a picture with the council?
Oh, of course, of course.
Would that work for you? Okay.
Can we just share a little something about?
Sure.
Yeah, I just want to share that KBBF has been in my life since I was seven years old, 50 years ago. I, my family and ourselves were part of the beginnings of KBBF, and my uncle was very involved in the beginning of it. And I remember as a child going to KBBF, the only and the first bilingual radio station in the country, to listen to Spanish music with our family. On Sundays, there was family gatherings for all the families of Sonoma County that would come, and they would have food and music and gatherings, and the children would play and the parents would dance. And I just really appreciate KBBF being in the community, helping in times of disasters. You guys have stepped up to the front and helped in times of disasters. I've seen it firsthand, and I appreciate, Alicia, that you've brought the station through the ups and downs that it's been through in the last years, and I just thank you for being at the helm and directing KBBF.
Oh, thank you so much. Thank you. Yeah, we've worked together, and thank you so much. And yes, I happen to know all her uncles, and, yes, and weren't you also in the, you also had a show?
I did, like in 1978, I had a radio station program on there. I was only like 13 or 14, but I had a station, a radio program. I was DJ there, a bilingual DJ, and my program was called Chicano Express, and I would play Spanish and English music and take dedications as well. So it was a great experience for a teenager.
Thank you so much. It was wonderful.
Thank you.
Can we have our photographer?
Oh, the photographer.
Actually, come in front of the diaphragm.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, well, yeah, or that, but then we can't read them. Okay, great, thank you for that. So we will be moving on to the next item, which is approval of the final agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No proposed changes, Mayor.
Okay. Then we will move on to citizens' business and public comment for the consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any items not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2021-01, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where disability accommodation has been requested. To facilitate public comment, the clerk will notify speakers when there are 30 seconds remaining. So with that, do we have any speaker cards tonight, or?
No cards.
No cards, okay, all right. Then, anyone wishing to speak on citizens' business, then can you raise your hand, and I'll try, okay, there we go. We have the first person.
My name is Mike Steckler.
Okay.
I'm the president of the HOA at Countryside Mobile Home Park, and I've emailed most of you, so I'm not sure how this is wor, how this is supposed to work, but what we're looking for is a senior park overlay. The owners of our park are trying to make it a family park, and we're all low-income senior citizens over there, and it's the only park in the city that is that. So I'm not sure if I'm supposed to ask you to put it on the agenda. I'm not sure. I'm just letting you know that that's what's going on and what my email said. Can you guys comment on that? Or can you or somebody?
After we take all the public comments, then we'll make direction to staff, and then folks may make small comments on that. So after, after all, any and all speakers have spoken on citizens' business, then we'll direct staff and/or make comments.
Okay, I'm just, I'm a little confused. I don't know if I'm supposed to ask you, hey, can we put this on the agenda for whenever, a month from now, whenever, so we can talk about it with you guys?
We will be directing staff to look into the matter, and then we will work together when, when staff is done with whatever they're doing to bring it back and put it on the agenda.
Okay, cool. And thank you very much, all of you, whoever's responded to me and working on this already, because I know you guys are. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that. Anyone else wanting to speak? Yes, sir. Hi.
Hi, my name is Wayne Randall. I'm from the Countryside Mobile Home Park in Kattati here with Mike Steckler. It was a bunch of us who desperately need some help. I can see the trains coming, and I'm just here to state how serious this is looking. The other thing I wanted to talk about was, I wanted to compliment the city of Kattati for helping me in a situation where my neighbor in front of my unit, which is a residential place, chipped in and got things, the ball rolling on getting the whole place cleaned up. And it took quite a while, but my compliments to the staff, and I think just they need to be complimented on how they just stuck with it, and it's been a life-changing little situation there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes.
Hi.
Hi. My name is Donna Rose. I'm not used to speaking publicly.
Okay.
And I just want to say that I live in the Mobile Home Park, which is up for end topic. And I would like to say, I hope that we can open up communication for us to talk about living, staying where we're living. I don't know what's going to happen. I know that Harmony owns the complex, and they have a really bad reputation, and I love where I live, and I love my neighbors, and I hope we all stay there. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Wasn't that bad, was it? You did fine. Anyone else? Not seeing anyone else jump up, so I will close while, while I'm here. Is there anybody that wants to speak on the consent calendar items? This is also the opportunity for that. Just want to remind folks. Not seeing anyone jump up on those three items either. Okay, so then I will close public comment for citizens' business and the consent calendar. So in addition to these comments, we've received multiple letters which, which are given to us, and I've had at least one conversation with Mr. Strickler on this, and have been talking with the city manager, and the city manager and staff are looking into this matter and seeing what our options are. And when we figure out what our options are, then we will bring this back so that we can have a discussion on this item. Do we have any kind of a timeframe on how long that might take? Any thoughts there?
Well, nothing specific. I actually was just speaking with Mike at the start of the meeting. We're, we're trying to set up a time when we can meet to talk through the various issues, and then we'll have a, at least I will have a better idea of what the issues are and, you know, what some of the problems are that we're trying to solve. So once I have that, then I think I have a much clearer idea of timelines.
Okay, and my guess is that the easiest way for everyone to know when it's going to be on the agenda, they can obviously watch our agendas every, every two weeks, but if you could please make sure, at a minimum, that we notify Mr. Steckler and anybody else that sent in letters, so that they are aware when this comes back on, that that discussion is available?
Certainly, I'd be happy to let anyone know that's emailed us when they come, when it comes back for council.
Okay, all right, yes.
And I'd just like to add, I think there's quite a bit of urgency in this
And I'd just like to add, I think there's quite a bit of urgency in this case, so this isn't a nine-month item, I don't think.
Yeah, I definitely got that impression, so try to move it as quick as possible.
Yes, sorry. Yeah, I just saw a news report like yesterday, the day before, of something similar in Petaluma, and it just reminded me of the letters that I've been receiving. So I'm also concerned about the elderly mobile home park, making sure that people have a place to live.
Laura, did you have anything to add?
Just a question, do we need to bring this up during direction on future agenda items once more, or is this sufficient here?
I mean, as far as I'm concerned, it's sufficient for me.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Then with that, thank you for your comments, and we will be in touch when we find out more information. But thank you for bringing this to our attention, and yes, it is important to us, and we know how important our mobile home parks are to our senior citizens, so.
I'm sorry. I'll let the rest of the residents know when we need them.
Okay. Thank you. All right, then with that, we have had public comment on the consent calendar, and I would be looking to see if anybody wanted to pull any of those items. No? Then I would be looking for a motion on the consent calendar.
I move to approve the consent calendar items.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion second, all in favor. So let that show a for yes and an accept. Okay, with that, we will move on to direction on future agenda items. Seeing anything? All right, then here we go.
I have a question.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if it's been brought up before, a discussion about land acknowledgement is part of our regular meetings. Have we, has anyone brought that up before? I don't know if it's new.
What?
Or maybe it's a discussion with city manager and mayor later about having a land acknowledgement. You know, we do, in our regular course of meetings, we have like the pledge of allegiance, but including a land acknowledgement for, just to acknowledge the land that we're on. Some other cities have it, and so it may be something for us to discuss and consider here.
Okay, I guess we can bring that up as a future agenda item. If everyone would like to do that, okay? Do you have that direction then? Okay, all right. Then now we will move on to the regular agenda, and the first item is consideration of a resolution approving a cannabis consumption lounge in conjunction with the commercial cannabis micro-business permit issued to Mercy Wellness of Catati at 7950 Redwood Drive, PA number 2304. And I believe we have a presentation, staff report?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey, members of the council. My name's JP Harris, excuse me, and I'm a senior planner with the city of Catati. And I do have a PowerPoint, and unfortunately, you're not going to see it, so you're going to have to follow along on paper. And also Brandon Levine from Mercy Wellness is here as well, has a presentation. My recommendation is we go through our, both our presentations, and then you can direct questions and comments to staff and Brandon also. So Mercy Wellness of Catati is proposing a cannabis consumption lounge. This would be in conjunction with their commercial cannabis micro-business permit. A micro-business permit allows you to do several things under, under the umbrella of a single permit. So Mercy currently is engaged in cultivation, manufacturing, retail sales, and distribution. They're definitely one of the larger cannabis businesses in Sonoma County, if not the largest. They currently operate at 7950 Redwood Drive, and these, the consumption lounge would be located in suites fifteen and sixteen of that, that building, which are the southernmost kind of half-octagon-shaped portion of the building. On slide three on page two of this, you can see the star indicates its location there. It's pretty much, it's just right next to Highway 101 off-ramp and, and between Redwood Drive. There's no buildings immediately adjacent to it, but Lowe's is across the street to the north, vacant land currently to the, to the west. The Apple Valley Shopping Mall is to the south, along with the 76 gas station, other gas stations as well. So the next slide, or the next graphic there, you could see the proposed lounge at the southern part of the building, as well the highlighted area or the shaded area shows their existing The next slide shows the floor plan. It's kind of outlined in, in black there to, to help show the actual interior area. And then there's a screen, kind of a screening fence around the outside that kind of contains that facility. Right now, the, what you see in the interior, where the bathrooms and, and the electrical rooms and storage will remain, but as far as what the lounge itself will look like, right now, if you go in there, there's a, you know, a bar, and there's a large walk-in refrigerator and a kitchen area. It's very likely that that's going to change over time, and we don't know what that final design will look like, but that's the space that it will be occurring in. So just a little bit of background. Mercy began operating in 2010. This was a couple of years after the city adopted its medical marijuana dispensary ordinance. They were the first and only medical dispensary in Catati. Then we renewed, we renewed their license for that annually up until 2018, when the city changed its laws to allow for commercial cannabis operations. In that same year, we awarded Mercy the, the micro-business license, and we have renewed that license biannually since, since adoption, since it was granted. And then in 2022, the city council amended the city's cannabis ordinance. One of the changes, one of the bigger changes was the, the ability to allow consumption lounges. This is consistent with what state law permits. And then I also want to let you know that this application came in early 2023, and since then, we've, through limited term permits, have allowed two events to occur. And, you know, the city staff viewed these as really kind of test trials. One of them was a 420 event, which we figured is, you know, kind of worst-case scenario, if you want to use those words, of like what the impact could be on the surrounding environment. And the other one was July 8th, Dabs and Desserts was the name of that particular event. And I actually went twice to the, to the 420 event. First time, I was escorted around, and then the second time, I went incognito, just to see how things were going. And I got to tell you, there was, there was, we were very concerned about, you know, if there would be too much odor or noise or things like that, and there was simply no odor coming from the event as I walked the perimeter. I could actually smell Burger King more than anything. And the noise that I heard was actually mostly coming from vehicles, from stereos and engines, and really, what their event kind of was drowned out. Parking was, well, when I went, there was no parking available at Mercy itself, but there was plenty of parking at the Park and Ride across the street, which is where I ended up parking. So we felt, and there were no police calls, no complaints at all that we received. And so we felt that the events were a successful test of what that consumption lounge would be operating like at, at maximum capacity. So on the next page, that described the operations. So they would allow for cannabis consumption. The idea is to allow for cannabis consumption in a safe and comfortable environment. It would allow for smoking, vaping, edibles, and topical applications. All the products that would be consumed in there must be purchased from Mercy, so no outside cannabis can be brought into the facility, and no alcohol and no tobacco is allowed within the, within the, would be allowed within the lounge. Initially, we think, we expect that the operations will be kind of sporadic, but this could, the way the resolution reads, would allow for daily operations while the retail center is open, which is from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM. It would allow for prepackaged food and beverage, beverages. And then eventually, there is an assembly bill right now, Assembly Bill 374, that's moving through the legislature and seems to be receiving, it's making it through all the committees and seems to be very popular, which would allow preparation of food. So more of the traditional kind of cafe that you'd think, so they would be able to produce food and beverages. And this resolution would allow for them to do that when state law, if state law changed to allow for that as well. And then the county would also have to inspect any kind of food facility. And then I mentioned that it would, they, they do have events, like the 420 event where they have music. They've had celebrity appearances, like Cheech Marin from Cheech and Chong has showed up and attracts people there. I know they want to have comedy and other types of performances. And, and I, because this is kind of new, we're, we've asked that they notify the city sixty days before one of these advertised events, and that's just so that we can adjust as we, as we see these events happening, if they, if we see that there's any issues that we want to address, that we have the ability to do that. This is a new type of activity in the city. So that's, that's the reason for that, that we usually don't put on our, our kind of lounges, bars in the area, but it's a go-slow approach. And then really, the safety, I think, is well described in the applicant's information, but I just highlight some of the points, and that is, they, all customers have to sign a membership agreement, which will be educational in talking about the safe consumption of cannabis. They use the Patron Scan, Patron Scan ID scanner, which is, it can look at thousands of IDs from around the world and can discern which ones are fake and which ones aren't. As well, it maintains a database of already bad actors, so they can filter them out before they even get through the door. They will have, be required to attend the employees of this lounge responsible server training, both the alcoholic ABCs training, which is, you know, trains in IDs, as well as identifying over-intoxication, when to cut someone else. And then there's another program, which Brandon is fairly active in developing with the, through the UC system, and I think he can talk about it, which is more cannabis-focused server training. As well, and we did, we require this during the events, to provide literature about the dangers of driving on cannabis, which, which they handed to me, you know, and received. They partner with ride-sharing services like Uber and provide rides for people that definitely need it. And then coupled with that, if someone refuses the ride service offices, they're obligated to notify the police that they have someone that's, you know, being belligerent and not, not taking their advice. They do have a security plan, it's approved by the chief of police, and then they also kind of have, it's called a safe consumption policy. It's an educational program. And those are the highlights, and, and so staff is recommending that the city council adopt a resolution amending Mercy's commercial cannabis micro-business permit to allow a cannabis consumption lounge at 7950 Redwood Drive within suites 15 and 16, as, as we've commissioned it. And with that, I will turn it over to Brandon or Felicia, and then be available for questions.
Welcome back, Brandon.
Yeah, I think I've been here a few times.
A couple of times.
I have less hair, and I'm losing my eyesight.
Oh, no. Well, it happens.
That's why I'm wearing glasses, but. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and members of the community. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Brandon Levine, CEO and founder of Mercy Wellness. Today, we're thrilled to present Mercy Wellness's application for onsite consumption, marking a significant step forward in our journey that began in 2010. Throughout these years, Mercy Wellness has maintained a flawless track record of compliance with both city and state regulations. Our partnership with the city of Catati has been symbiotic, as the cannabis industry has evolved, so have we. Our humble beginnings were restricted by 1,250 square feet in the beginning, accommodating a limit of a thousand patients and capping our onsite product, product storage at 30 pounds. Through unwavering dedication, we have demonstrated our responsibility as business operators, and we have been instrumental in influencing positive changes. Working hand-in-hand with Catati, we have expanded our operations to over 35,000 square feet, encompassing retail, cultivation, manufacturing, and distribution, and hopefully soon onsite consumption. It's a testament to our growth and adaptability. Today, we stand at the cusp of yet another evolution, aligned with Catati's recent ordinance revision introducing onsite consumption to the cannabis landscape. This marks a pivotal opportunity for both Mercy Wellness and Catati to lead the way in establishing Sonoma County's only onsite consumption lounge. This is an ambitious endeavor that we are fully prepared to undertake. Our journey thus far has been in anticipation for this moment, where we can create the lounge at Mercy. Our commitment to setting the industry standard is unmatched, and we persistently forge ahead while others grapple with challenges. We embrace the future responsibility associated with onsite consumption and are dedicated to establishing safe and responsible environment. Collaborating closely with law enforcement, city, state officials, we will employ every measure necessary to ensure safety remains paramount. As we embark on this endeavor, we recognize the significance of getting it right from the start. In the following statements, in the following segments, I will explain the detailed process and measures that we will ensure safe and responsible operation of the lounge at Mercy. This is an opportunity to establish a new benchmark, and we are fully committed to proving that we are an asset to the community. I was going to have a overhead thing, so if everybody has that, you can kind of...
This, handout, everyone?
Yep, go along with me here. So thanks to Felicia for putting all this together. First page, obviously, is onsite consumption. If you go to the second page, it gives a little description of what we are and who we have become as we started out as just retail. So we're a multifaceted micro-business facility that's meant to show transparency of cannabis production to the processes, to our consumers, so that they can trust the quality and care that goes into our products. The onsite consumption lounge is a final piece and will allow customers to be educated and try new products in a safe, clean, and comfortable environment. If you go to the next page here, you'll see a site plan. It kind of shows you, gives you a reference to the amount of space that we have now, as well as where each operation is in reference to retail. So we provide a unique experience where one can see cultivation and manufacturing while shopping, and soon, we would like to have onsite consumption, which would be down at the end of the building, which was previously Graff South Brewing. If you go to the next page, it's just a, some of the things are already in the staff's presentation, which I did a really good job of, but you'll see the square footage of the indoor space, and there is approximately 10,000 square foot of outdoor space. If you go to the next page, education is huge for us. This gives us the opportunity to educate the community. With onsite consumption, we're able to educate the community on types of products, terpenes, and the associated effects and onsets for the various consumption methods. Our goal is to get people to start low and go slow. We have very skilled and knowledgeable staff that will create customized dosing based on experience. With the use of our current point-of-sale system, TREES, we can track the customers, reflect all purchases, and record a track and trace, where we make notes and recommendations to all of these new and experienced customers. It also will help us monitor their impairment, where we will identify whether or not they need a ride, and we have a ride-share program that will be... And we have a ride-share program that will be at our cost. We'll make sure that people get home safe. We put a lot of focus, next page, sorry, on the training. We put a lot of focus into training our staff. The consumption lounge staff included, security, will receive the following training. Responsible beverage services, maintain an active server certificate through the California ABC's online portal. And then there's a little something extra here where we're, we're working with a program out of the UC San Diego School with, of a public health and school of medicine, where it gives us a traffic safety training and education for driving safety. I think it's called higher education. And we worked with the highway patrol on this one. Driving high is a DUI. So you might see that on the side of the freeway where they have their digital signs go up. We were a part of that. Next page is, safety is our number one focus. Everybody will be required to sign a membership agreement, and in that membership agreement will have very specific rules. And if they were to violate those rules, their membership will be revoked and not let in the front door. We will not serve anybody who arrives physically impaired. Driving high is a DUI pamphlet. It will be given to every person as they come through the door. And like I was saying before, the Uber ride-share program is available to anybody that may need it, whether we deem it necessary or they even ask us for it. We will have Uber vouchers for customers coming in and leaving. Safe consumption messages will be posted around the premise, online and via public service announcement. And there will be no alcohol and no tobacco use allowed. Next page. Security has been at the very top of our list. Our security systems match that of a casino, from having the actual equipment, being very high-tech and user-friendly, to having highly-trained staff. We employ another third-party security company that most of their staff are ex-military and very well-trained staff. Security cameras will be in place in all areas of the business and be monitored by security staff. With that, we also have 24-hour monitoring on the security cameras. Security guards will be located throughout the premise and will conduct regular security checks. Mercy will use a Patron Scan, which I know that we had said it before, but it does allow for us to identify fake IDs. And when people are actually checking in, it snaps a photo of them while they're checking in. So if we do have a problem with them, we'll be able to identify that person and either not let them in or address the problem as it comes up. The systems that we have are point-of-sale systems, TREES, can track the customers also. So if they're banned, we have a note in there. It actually won't let them pass go. The smell, everybody's worried about smell. Also, safety of the employees and the staff and patrons that would be coming in there. The system that we're designing is highly engineered. So Mercy is committed to creating a safe and pleasant environment, ensuring that the surrounding communities will not be inconvenienced by unwanted odors. To achieve this, the establishment will implement a state-of-the-art engineered HVAC system designed specifically to mitigate smoke and odors. This advanced system will effectively filter and purify the air, ensuring that any lingering smells are minimized and smoke is quickly removed. If you go to the next page, there's two pages of conceptual designs. Think restoration hardware, if you've ever been there. Where I get a lot of my ideas, we want to bring outside, inside, and inside, outside. The, these are just ideas to kind of give you a visual of what you might see when we do end up building it out. But the intention is to actually open up the outside to the inside, so that you'll have an experience like a, maybe like a microbrewery where you would go to and have that outdoor patio connected to the inside. After these conceptual designs, just to name a few of our achievements, there's been a lot of them, but recently, we won, we swept the state fair. We won three Golden Bear Awards. With the Golden Bear Awards, that's the best overall. We happened to win more awards than anybody else at the show, thanks to our team. It's been a really awesome journey to have such dedicated and talented people with me. We won this year, we won third-place pre-roll, and we're not even a pre-roll company. Last year, we won Best Dispensary 2022 Emerald Cup, Leafly Best Dispensary 2022 Next Door, we just won that award, Neighborhood Fave, and multiple awards after that. Just putting a few of them out What we really want to create is an outlet for social consumption that works well with the city and sets an example for everybody else in the state. This isn't taken lightly. We've spent a lot of time building our reputation, and we continue to have the same morals and values and push forward the innovation and trying to be a good steward of the position where we're in. I really appreciate you guys considering this, and staff's done a really good job on their presentation and keeping everything in line. And it's, it's been a good journey with the city of Cattati. So thank you, and I'm here for any further questions.
Okay, any questions for either Brandon or JP? Yes, Ben?
I've got a few. Thank you. First, I just want to say thank you for building your business here. It's been great to watch, watch it grow. And I know you're not exclusively in Cattati anymore, but I like to think you're, this is still your main place. So, one confusion on the floor plans between JP's presentation and yours. In JP's, it looks like there's a suite between your current operation and the consumption lounge, and in yours, that shows as your distribution space. Are, do you occupy the whole building all the way down?
So the distribution space is actively operating. I think maybe they just missed it on the, when, maybe when they were putting it together?
You occupy the whole building right up to the consumption lounge? There's not a break in between?
You know, there is not a break in between. So the state requires us to have one contiguous space. So we have to be connected all of the spaces, whether there's a door through it or not. The state requires that for you to have a micro-business license.
Okay. And the only reason that came up for me is I'm, in, in the materials that are in the packet, you described that, you know, you order in the lounge and then somebody delivers from the retail space.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I just, that, like I'm picturing somebody walking down the sidewalk, and that raises security concerns for me. And I'm sure, I know you've got a security plan that you've been over with the chief.
Have you been to our store yet?
Not for a long time.
Okay. So, the way that we're able to protect our product and keep it out of the view of people is, you know the old bank tubes? So I have a very secure vault in the very middle of the building. And currently, to get the product out on the floor, we do not have any product out on the floor other than the displays. So it's a minimal amount. The security risk is low. Inventory control is very high. We intend on getting that approved by the state. As of right now, they don't know if they can allow that. But as of right now, there will be a delivery that will go over to the onsite consumption. We'll be proposing the, the tube system. That's all it's going to take us for us to spell it out to them. Because the state, when they come out, they're like, wait, what, we don't know what's going on either.
Okay, okay, thanks. That's great. A small question. So one of the, one of the methods in the materials you sent us is tinctures, which are alcohol-based. How does that jibe with the no alcohol?
Uh, we, one, there's a, in tinctures, there's a very limited amount of alcohol that's allowed in it. The allowable amount is so minuscule that you cannot get intoxicated by the alcohol.
Okay, so it doesn't...
But generally, most of the tinctures are non-alcohol-based. We've found that customers don't like the alcohol-based ones. So there are other methods of extraction and administration through the alcohol-based nanotechnology and things like that. We developed one in 2016 where we used nano-sized phospholipids. So think like soy luscitin, and then break it down to really small particle sizes, and it's, the absorption rate's in like, less than five minutes.
Okay.
So it gives people an opportunity to feel the effect before they would overdo it, in some cases where you'd be concerned about people taking edibles and things like that. So the nanotechnology is now present, we started that in 2016, and most of the companies now are utilizing that technology in their products. So it doesn't take an hour to take effect. And so you can start to feel the effects within about five minutes to 10 on, on the high side, which makes it a lot easier for us to propose even having any type of edibles and drinks as well. The drinks also are using the same technology.
Okay, thanks. And last question is about jobs. And so I'm assuming that these are, because you have security requirements and higher training requirements, that there are somewhat sort of a higher-level, better-paying job than a restaurant server or bartender even. Is that true? And, and do you picture, is compensation tip-based or hourly and salary-based?
So for the lounge, the lounge will be a service industry type of job. So there will, most likely will be tips. We tend to pay people a bit higher than going wages for the same positions in other businesses. We have close to 100 employees currently right now. And they range from entry level to very well-paid positions. We just implemented a 401K plan, and we do also have benefits. We're actually a real company, finally.
Okay, great. Thanks. That's all my questions.
Thank you for that. Sylvia, do you have questions? No? Laura?
Thank you. I had two questions for you and then one for staff. First question was, you started to answer, it was about the edibles. I was wondering, will there be any serving of more traditional edibles that take a long time to kick in? And if so, how will you handle making sure people aren't leaving and...
I'm pretty sure we don't even sell the, those like old-school edibles that take an hour to two hours to kick in. Like I said, anybody who wants to survive in this industry, they have to change with the technology and the times. And so now, all of these companies are using nanotechnology in their formulation. So...
Okay.
Yeah.
So you won't be babysitting someone for three hours before you let them on the...
We're going to be babysitting them the whole time, actually. I mean, it's, we have to keep an eye on everybody and making sure that they're, one, being compliant, two, not bringing product inside that's from outside, and that we're only serving a reasonable amount for, you know, entry-level people.
Okay, great, thank you. My second question was about the air, air filter system.
Mm-hmm.
I appreciate, by the way, I think this report was really exhaustive. So thank you so much for that. I answered almost all my questions. But my only concern was just to know a little bit more about how the employees will be protected from secondhand smoke. I saw there was a requirement on the permit about that, but I just wanted a little more...
So there are, there are standards set forth by engineering that are currently used in indoor smoking facilities, such as the casino. You know, you think that that would be one of those standards that are, you know, held very highly. So we've worked with an engineering firm to develop a system that will have X amount of air turns, overchange, and it basically filters all the smoke out. So it, there's a measurable, and I don't know the numbers exactly, but there's a measurable particulate matter that is safe for humans to constantly breathe. And we'll be hitting those numbers based on the engineering, when they stamp the plans, we're relying on them to use their knowledge to give us the right information.
Are you going to have them come in and do like air quality sampling and testing once the system's up and running?
So there will be monitors that are constantly operate, or that are constantly measuring the particulate matter in the space. Yep. And then with those systems, much like our manufacturing, where it measures the solvents, or the CO2, or the carbon monoxide, there's sensors all over in manufacturing that are measuring all of that, and they set alarms off. That'll also exist inside of the onsite consumption, but for particulate matter.
Awesome. All right, thank you for clarifying, clarifying that. And then I just had a question, just to make sure, this, this permit would be specific to Mercy Wellness and wouldn't run with the, the site?
Yeah, that's right. None of our, our, our commercial cannabis permits are operating permits. They're, they're not use permits that do run with the land. They're, they go to a particular operator. And so like if Brandon's company were to leave, then, yeah, there would be no longer a micro-business, business there unless the council granted another business that, that license.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Yeah, one question I had, just to confirm. Now, you had said the staff are required to attend the RBS ABC certification course.
Mm-hmm.
The other one, the responsible cannabis server, is that already available for them to take the ABC? Is that a separate one that's coming up?
Felicia?
Can I speak on that?
Sure.
Yep. She's been working on this diligently for quite some time.
Yeah, I've taken the RBS certification, and I know how extensive it is, and I hadn't heard about the RCS one.
Yeah, so good evening. My name is Felicia Akamazo. I am the operations director for Brandon and Mercy Wellness. I've been with the company for eight years, so I'm happy to see your faces again. We were here a lot of times for the micro-business stuff. So to answer your question, it was our hopes that we wanted to create the standard. We wanted to create the responsible consumption service program. The state, it does not exist. Like the DCC, the ABC, this is a new thing for them. So we actually approached one of the, the trainer that I went and took my RBS program, a place in Sacramento. They're very interested in working with us to create and establish that program. We just got a little busy with all of the things going on. So that's something that, it's definitely still in the plan. But again, we just need time to be able to, to work with an agency to help us create that standard. But we did find an alternate program, which was the UC San Diego School of Medicine and Public Health. They created the Driving High DUI Program. And that's another program. I think it's like 45 minutes of video that talks about impairment. It also covers other types of impairment with, whether it be with pharmaceuticals or alcohol and stuff like that. So it's pretty comprehensive. And myself and another person in our office are actually registered to be a certified trainer of that program. But I think what we're going to do is we're going to have our employees take it themselves through the UC San Diego School System.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you for that.
Okay, if there are no more questions, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Brandon, I have no questions. My questions that I had were asked by other council members, so...
All right, thank you.
I will then open this up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please raise your hand, or jump up, or... I am not seeing anyone wanting to speak on this item, so I'll bring it back. You know, I think you put it in your presentation, Brandon, and JP put it in his. We've been working with Mercy for quite some time now. You know, I was here in the beginning when, you know, people in Cattati didn't even want to have this here at all. And Brandon has, you know, done an excellent job. He's been available to help educate the public for us to even get a dispensary here. And that education has continued. And I have been to Mercy a few times and looked at the operation. It's really top-notch. It's very professional. And I think that one of the things that is in his report that he put in here, which I think kind of says it all, and it's, in his plan, it says, "We only have one opportunity to make the first impression, and we want it to feel right. And our focus will be on cannabis education and safe consumption." And when I see that in, in Brandon's report, I, I believe that to be true, because his focus always tends to be on, on his clients and what is best for his clients. And I think that he's put together a plan that, that really kind of emphasizes that. And he, he gets that being first out there, that, you know, he's the one that has to set that bar. And thus far, in this journey that we've had since 2010... And thus far, in this journey that we've had since 2010, he's set that bar pretty high. So, I have a feeling that that bar will stay high based upon this plan. And so, that's my two cents on this. Laura, did you want to add anything?
I'll just say that I'm really grateful to have such a renowned business within our borders and just to see the leadership that you're taking throughout the region and the state and making business better for everyone. So, thank you for being part of our community.
Sylvia?
You know, just thank you for outlining everything and being a trailblazer, you know, in the lounge and this new MRC, RCS, right, or something similar to it. So, I just thank you for being trailblazers and providing as much information up to the nanotechnology that I didn't fully understand, but I kind of get it, you know, so thank you so much for that.
Ben?
Nothing to add. I'm on board.
Okay. So, with that then, I would be looking for a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that the city council of the city of Catati approve the cannabis consumption lounge in conjunction with a micro-business commercial cannabis permit issued to Mercy Wellness of Catati at 7950 Redwood Drive, PA number 23-04.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion is second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not seeing any and we have one absent, so that passes with four yeses and one absent. So, thank you for that and I'm hoping that we'll get a tour when you get that up and running also. So, thank you for that. And let's see. Let us move on to our next item, which is the award of the Petaluma Boulevard South and Airport Boulevard Park and Ride Project Construction Contract. And, oh, there we go.
Yeah, Mayor, Members of the Council, Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer. This item also is, we have a PowerPoint for this item, which is before you. And then for Members of the Public, the PowerPoints are available at the back desk so you can follow along. This is for the award of the construction contract for the Petaluma Boulevard South and Airport Boulevard Park and Ride Project. So, this has a history that goes back 20-plus years where the city realized the park and ride lot is being underutilized and it's in the middle of what we call the North Gateway project development area. And our downtown-specific plan has a lot of vibrant development, you know, allowable for that area because of its location. And so, this, just in 2014, after a culmination of years and years and years of negotiations with Caltrans, the city entered into a park and ride replacement project. That's not the formal name, but that's what we're gonna call it tonight. It's basically, they would allow the city to, they would transfer that property to the city and then, in exchange for that, the city would create 166 replacement park and ride, parking lot spots, spots, one in Petaluma and the other over by the airport area. And there's also, part of the agreement would be to maintain 30 park and ride spaces at the hotel parking lot. And the city would have two years from commencement of construction of that property to actually complete the construction. The, flip over to the third slide, there's the vicinity maps for the two park and ride lots. One is the existing park and ride lot, like as I mentioned, just off South Petaluma Boulevard South. It's, we'd be extending on either side of that parking, existing park and ride lot. And the other one, you should see there, it's just vacant land right now near the Airport Boulevard and Highway 101 interchange. So, these were identified and included in the agreement. This is where the city needs to produce those extra parking spaces. Design bidding, if you're following along in the presentation, the council approved the design agreement with BKF in 2018. And that agreement was to go through the peer, which is the more intensive process with Caltrans because it's a larger project where 20 of their departments look over our plans and provide comments and we have to provide responses to those. We do a very extensive environmental review process. So, that was all completed. And sort of in parallel to that, the city approved the hotel and marketplace project, provided entitlements, conditioned entitlements for that project in 2019. And then the applicant submitted improvement plans on, in June 22nd. The land sale was April, is that right? Somewhere around there, a few months ago? The land sale was recently...
It was December.
Oh, okay, December. How time flies. And then, so the design was completed, we received the encroachment permit from Caltrans and the land sold. So, we went ahead and put the project out to bid and opened bid, two bids on June 27th of this year. And the low bid was from Jalati Brothers, Inc. for 2.6 million roughly, which was nearly 24% below the engineer's estimate. And we reviewed the bid and it was responsive, that is, it addressed all of the contract requirements and was competitive. Now, the intent was for the land sale to pay for the construction of the park and ride lots, so, spaces. The land sale came in at 2.3 million and so we were short because with the construction contract, the construction management agreement, which was 377,000, and contingency, our total budget is about just over $3.3 million. So, the exercise staff went through and were proposing for tonight is that we found available funds in the current fiscal year budget. And these are several different areas. One is the delay of the parking lot project behind City Hall here. And then, the other category is unused contingency. So, the roadwork right in front of City Hall here, that actually came in below budget. So, all of that contingency, which was $350,000, we're just gonna conservatively say 50,000 is being held in reserve, is available for this project. The Catati Park revitalization project would have unused contingency of about $110,000. And we're fairly, we're confident that these funds are available because these projects are substantially complete. We're just going through very minor punchless items for those. The other category is the Sunflower and Putnam Park improvement projects where we had budgeted not only design, but some construction. And looking, looking now that we have proposals from consultants, it looks like the schedule's gonna spill off in the next fiscal year, so we will not be tapping into that construction funds. So, that's where that money is coming from. And then I think the, was it Putnam Park? Oh, then the street, yeah. So, that's, that's, that covers what the budget amendments would be. And that's part of this resolution would be to acknowledge and approve of those adjustments. Otherwise, those funds would go back into the unencumbered general fund, fund. Okay, so, moving on to schedule. Upon the award of the contract, anticipating award tonight, we would, the rest of August and into September would be to execute the contract documents, to collect the bonds and have the contract signed by both the city and the contractor and as well as the construction management contract into the rest of September. And into early October, we would issue the notice to proceed, have a kickoff meeting and they would have, contractor would have 120 days to complete the construction. And if everything goes well and there's no rain delays, the earliest completion date based on those 120 days and holidays would be mid-March of next year. The two years extends beyond that, so it does give us some flexibility for delays in So, that brings us to the recommendation and, which is to adopt the resolution awarding the Petaluma Boulevard South and Airport Boulevard Park and Ride Project to Jalati Brothers, Inc. and authorizing the city manager to execute the construction contract for the project, the construction management and inspection agreement, and any needed change orders and amendments up to the approved project budget. That concludes my presentation and be happy to respond to any questions you might have.
Questions? Sylvia? Questions? No? I just have one question. Since one is in Petaluma and one is in Windsor, will Jalati be putting two teams on there to get it done within the timeframe or are they gonna single-thread these?
So, the means and methods, how the contractor gets the job done is up to them.
Okay.
It's not, we don't require them to specify that in the contract. But the construction managers can have the same situation where it's split between the two sites, which are pretty far apart.
Right, exactly. That's why I didn't know if they'd put two teams on there and the poor construction manager would have to be going up and down the freeway.
That'll be worked out in the pre-construction meeting.
Okay, thank you. That was my only question. If there are no other questions, then I will open this up for public comment. Anybody wishing to speak on this, please raise your hand or jump up or... Okay, I am not seeing anyone wanting to speak on this item, so I will bring it back to the council. Any comments or I'd be looking for a motion?
Well, I just got one comment.
Okay.
I want to acknowledge we got at least one public comment via email or one of these letters, acknowledging that, you know, it's disappointing that this is costing a significant chunk of city funds to carry through on this commitment and it's clear we don't have a choice. We entered this agreement with Caltrans in 2014 and we've, we're well down the process, well, sort of along in the process. So, I think that the, clearly we don't have a choice and the underused park and ride lot was never gonna be a long-term solution for downtown Catati and this is what it's gonna cost us to get to the next, next stage of downtown.
Well, and to, you know, to add on to that, as it was sitting there as a park and ride lot, no one gets the benefit of the property tax because they didn't pay property tax. So, not the city, not the schools, not the fire department, nobody benefited because property taxes weren't paid on that. So, now that it will become this, property taxes will be paid, so all of those entities will get a portion of that in addition to the city being able to collect TOT when the hotel is done. So, it went from a, you know, lot that was barely used and yes, we have to invest a little bit, but I think in the larger scheme of things, it makes sense. And, you know, who knew that when, this was finally arranged in 2014, that construction costs would, you know, change by that much? But that is the reality that we're in, so I think we need to move forward. So, with that, I'd be looking for a motion.
I'd be happy to move a resolution awarding the construction contract for the Petaluma Boulevard South and Airport Boulevard Park and Ride Project to Jalati Brothers, Inc. and authorizing the city manager to execute the construction contract and construction management and inspection services agreement and any needed change orders and amendments up to the authorized project budget amount.
I'll second. I have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That is the a with one absent. Okay, so, thank you for that and thank you, Craig. And we will be moving on to the next item, which is the city manager's report. You're up, Damian. You've been quiet tonight.
I know, thank goodness, I finally get to speak. Yeah. So, just a reminder, we are wrapping up, hopefully wrapping up the last bits of internal, sort of internal setup of the civic-ready, the alert notification system. So, I mentioned in the prior meeting that we plan in August to start pushing out to all of our Nixwell users that transition's gonna be imminent to move over. So, we're not quite there yet, but I hope very soon we'll be getting those messages out to everyone and starting the, starting the transition. We are, the police department is planning to work with Runner Park and SSU on a high-low drill in September, and so that's also gonna be sort of a first test of the new system, I think, once, you know, once it's up and running and we have people transitioned over. Catati Park, just a reminder, the park, well, the park is open, I think everyone knows that. And happily, happily, I will say that I've been there numerous times since the playgrounds have opened and like literally every time, it's packed with families and people, so it's, I love, it's great to see, so...
I went by there this evening and there was quite a lot of people out there, which was nice.
Yeah, the only bummer still is the restroom is closed because of the PG&E meter that we're still waiting on in the set. So, hopefully that'll be soon, but the reminder is, is that this Friday, or I'm sorry, this Tuesday, coming Tuesday, August 15th is a ribbon-cutting event, so hopefully see y'all there and the public there as well. It'll be, it'll be a fun event for everyone. And then, Pocket Park, we had said earlier this year that we were waiting on some milkweed plants to come as part of our monarch butterfly pledge. And we do have up to 50 milkweed plants that we plan to plant this Friday, so that's August 11th and Pocket Park's starting at 9:00 AM. So, if anyone is available, not just council, but public, anyone that's available, all are welcome to help us plant those milkweed plants out there. The park and ride project, you guys, we just talked about that, so we're gonna be working on getting everyone under contract. The pavement, 2024 pavement maintenance project, that's out to bid currently. This is the road repair slurry seal. So, it's not the heavy reconstruction work like we've been doing these last two projects, but more just slurry seal and crack seal. That is out to bid currently and it's focused around the Gravenstein Way area. I mean, the council just approved the design contract, or the design amendment recently. So, that's Gravenstein and School Street are the areas that it focuses on, so that zone. And we plan to do that, or bring it back for award for construction hopefully this fall. Redwood Drive in Cypress, so that design work, this is the reconstruction of those two redways, that design work is done and we're gonna be looking to bring that back this winter for, well, bidding this winter and then award, construction starting in the spring. And ahead of that, Cypress Sewer, we're almost done with the design on that. This is repairs to the Cypress Sewer before the paving project rolls through there. And obviously, the sequence is that the Cypress Sewer would happen first, the repairs would happen and then the paving would happen after. So, that's coming up in the near future. The Catati Hotel, grading is continuing and we expect the initial utility work to start very soon out there. And hopefully, a lot of the groundwork will be done this summer so that they can then continue to work through the winter on the vertical elements. But it's continuing to move along, so that's, it's great, great to see. And then, the council also approved tonight, approved tonight the Santero Way planning agreement, so we're gonna be kicking off that officially with the community in the very near future to get that planning effort underway out at Santero. And then, this is still beta testing, but free public Wi-Fi is in La Plaza Park and we're continuing to test it. We have the accordion festival coming up a little later this month, so that's gonna be a very good test of that system and see how it does. But we're, we are tracking, we're tracking usage throughout all the events to see kind of how it, how it's doing and if we need to do additional work out there to have really good solid coverage across the whole park. This coming Saturday, August 12th, we're hosting an in-person community... This coming Saturday, August 12th, we're hosting an in-person community design workshop for Putnam Park and Civic Center Park, and we're using this to get public input on both of those, both those parks. So, there's signs up around the City Hall Complex, as well as the parks, so if you haven't been to one of the parks, you'll see it, as well as a, you know, a, sorry about that, a QR code, you know, to, to get more information, it's also on the city webpage on the city news. And there's, and lastly, there's also a survey that we've been running for both parks to get further input if people can't make the meeting, and this is the first of two meetings, as we talked about when we did the agreement. I mentioned earlier, August 15th is the ribbon cutting for Kattati Park from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. La Plaza, at La Plaza Park, the farmer's market continues every Wednesday from 4:30 to 7:30 through the end of September, so there's a lot of great stuff there. Next weekend, August 19th and 20th, is the Kattati Accordion Festival in La Plaza Park, and that's 9:30 AM to 8:00 PM, and I think I don't need to talk about what that is, everyone knows, but tickets are available at kattatifest.com. And then the following weekend, August 25th and 26th, North Bay Theatrics is doing their summer theater program in the park, and it's midnight summer's dream, 7:00 PM each day, and it's free to attend, and all are welcome, if you wanna see some theater in the park, kids' theater. And then Friday, August 25th, is our August Kids Night Out event from 5:00 to 9:00, where you can drop your kids off with our camp staff, and they hang out with, and play games with the kids, while the parents can go out and do things, or run errands, or whatever they wanna do. And then, finally, just so everyone knows, we have, we're getting ready for fall classes with a bunch of new additions, including youth soccer, children's piano, Falong Gong Free Meditation classes, and more, we also continue to offer Zumba Gold five days a week, Zumba Fitness, children's ballet, pre-ballet, youth theater, children's gymnastics, and Aikido. And, and lastly, just in the rec, in rec news, we're gearing up to start actively advertising the vets, vet center as a, as a facility, we've been getting all the parts and pieces together, but we're getting close to being able to proactively push, you know, push out to the community, so they know that that's available, it's another venue if they wanna rent. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? No? Well, thank you for that. Then I guess we will move on to city council member reports, Sylvia, start that way.
Sure, yeah, last Friday, I attended the Los Yen Program, it was on sexual assault and human trafficking with Verity, so it was really, they had a panel with Lieutenant Mahren and staff from the Redwood Children's Center, the attorney's office, and Verity, and they talked about the process and gave us some case studies, and it was really empowering and really informative, so I was glad I attended that on Friday, but that's what I have.
Dan?
Just mentioned Sonoma Clean Power briefly, I reported in the past on sort of legislative threats to CCAs, like Sonoma Clean Power, and they have, at least for this year, been kind of beaten back with, with a lot of assistance from our local legislators, but they're expected to resurface every year. The governor seems to believe that, that central procurement of electricity is a better way to meet the states, mostly, it's mostly about grid reliability, and keeping the lights on, and so he's been pushing a lot of proposals that would reduce consumer, whatever CCA stands for, like Sonoma Clean Power, our ability to procure cleaner power and to lead the development of clean power, so those are successfully on the back burner for this year at least, the, and Sonoma Clean Power continues to really lead the state in pushing for development of new geothermal resources at the Geysers, has issued some, some new public-private partnership agreements that are really pushing some different and exciting technologies that could lead to pretty big additions to the electric supply. Thanks.
Laura?
Thank you, I attended the WAC-TAC meeting on Monday, and during our meeting, we had a update on the Potter Valley Project, and some of the things that the grant that was received was working on, but all of that seemed to be rendered a little bit irrelevant by a big announcement that was made at the TAC meeting right after the WAC meeting. Craig, I don't know if you wanna jump in, since I wasn't at the TAC meeting when they did all of this?
So, this was Monday afternoon at 4:00, there was a press release, but ahead of that, with the TAC meeting in the morning, the Sonoma Water made the announcement that they had submitted a proposal for joining PG&E's decommissioning and surrender proposal, which they have to submit to the Federal Electric Regulatory Commission in November, and the strategy there was PG&E is believed, they just want out of the PVP, and they really don't have an interest in maintaining any of the diversions, so if we want to maintain those diversions, we would need to have a foot in the door, and so that proposal was a foot in the door, just to keep that option open, and along with that proposal, there's details about decommissioning Scott Dam and Cape Horn Dam, and what that would be replaced with to maintain some sort of run of the river, that is, no storage on the Eel River Side, just natural flows when they're available coming through the diversion, so that's kind of in a nutshell what was announced on Monday.
And they had said during the WAC meeting, that this, the grant that was used to form the Russian River Water Forum, that's looking at all these issues, was also funding an assessment of how the Potter Valley water supply could be enhanced, so that if the diversion were to still bring water into Potter Valley, they would be able to store that water locally, and then also, they, the grant was going to fund, looking at three different options for how the diversion can be maintained, in terms of what to do with the Van Arsdale Dam, one of the options was to do a substantial redesign of that facility and keep it running as a dam, another option was to replace it with an 800-foot ramp built of giant boulders, that would somehow funnel the water into the pipe, and the third was to do a pumping station, sort of similar to what we have on Yerba and Waller Road, so they were gonna look at all three of those options at the 30% design level, and then one of those, take, decide which one to take further, and I don't know if that's all still relevant in light of the new announcement, but I think so. Yeah, and one thing that I'm a little bit concerned about, because I was just trying to come up to speed on this quickly, is that this Russian River Water Forum is supposed to have a planning group, which contains a lot of members that are officially appointed, and that planning group has been meeting already, and then there's also supposed to be a leadership group as part of it, that includes selected officials, and that's where we could have some attendance at that leadership group, however, the leadership group doesn't exist yet, and hasn't met yet, and when somebody asked Mike Thompson at the WAC meeting what the timeline was for when it would start to meet, he said, "I haven't heard anything yet." And so, I'm, I'm a little concerned that the leadership group doesn't exist, which is confusing to me, and that these decisions are already seem to be made, so I'll be keeping an eye, an eye on that, and keeping you informed.
Seems kinda leader, leaderless.
Well, it's being led by the planning group at the moment, yeah, so. I was unable to attend the first legislative committee meeting that finally is happening, but council member Ford was able to attend in my stead, and Melanie Bagby was elected chair of that committee, so I'm sure I'll have more to report in the future.
I'm glad that's up and running again, so, that's a good thing, I think, for all of us. So, my committees will be starting up, starting tomorrow, so, hit the ground, I've gotten a little bit of a July break here, but everything will start, starting tomorrow, so I don't have anything to report, unfortunately, and so with that, or fortunately for you, I guess, next we will move on to public comment on non-action agenda items, anybody in the public wish to speak on any non-action agenda items? Not seeing anybody jump up or raise their hand, okay, they're looking at one another, but that's okay. So then we will move on to information received after the agenda was posted, and Kevin, I think you had quite a stack of stuff for us, if you wanna...
Yes, there were several items, four public comments, two for citizens' business regarding the mobile home park issue that was brought up earlier, as well as a public comment on Items 11A and 11B, as well as some corrections to the staff report for Item 9B.
Okay, thank you for that, and with that, I will call this meeting adjourned at 7:34, thank you everyone for attending.